I'd like to call to order the Village Board Regular Meeting of October 17th, 2013, to order at 7:02 PM. Clerk Simmsky, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Gunter.
Here.
The clerks here, Trustee Addington.
Here.
Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Trustee Seneca.
Here.
Manager Searle is here. Attorney Zemanak.
Here.
And Public Works Director Assistant Manager May.
Here.
Very good. And I'd like to, at this point, I ask Johnny, come on up here, Kerish, you're gonna lead us in the pledge. We know we have Boy Scouts here today, and I'd ask him to come and please stand here, and everybody else, please rise. And I'll ask John, since your Boy Scout troop is here, you can lead us in the pledge.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this point, we'll go into open forum, and I have two requests. The first one is from the Westmont Chamber, Lenny Bowen. Lenny?
I'm standing in for Mary Huska. She became grandma today. Called me and asked if I would help. Good evening to the mayor, members of the village board, and members of our audience here, and all watching on TV or online. My name is Lenny Bowen. I'm a member of the Westmont Chamber Winter Ball Committee, and I'm here to invite all of you to attend our annual Westmont Winter Ball. This is a community event. It's for everyone, whether you're a chamber member or not. It's a special celebration of the season, and a wonderful time for, to connect with friends and make new friends. The Westmont Winter Ball will be on Friday, November 22nd, at the Oakbrook Hills Marriott Resort. The reception starts at 6:30. Dinner is at 7:30. We have live entertainment, auctions, raffles, a professional photo booth, and special surprise guests will be featured. The Oakbrook Hills Marriott has provided a terrific special room rate that all of you can take advantage of up till November 1st. It's $55 for any of you that can stay overnight. We have a limited number, so make sure, and make your reservations early. We hope you'll come and discover what a wonderful time you can have at the Westmont Winter Ball. Bring a friend. It's a great time for small businesses to either bring special preferred clients, or some of their employees, as a thank you for all their efforts to help their business for the year. You can RSVP for a table at the westmontchamber.com, or via phone at 630-960-5553. Are there any questions?
No, it's gonna be at the Oakbrook Marriott, beautiful Westmont.
Yeah, at the Marriott, the tent.
Westmont.
And it's a wonderful event, so I hope you'll all come and join us. Thank you.
Thanks, Lenny. Thank you, Lenny. Our other open forum request is from the Westmont Chamber, the Executive Director, Larry Forsberg.
Good evening, everybody. Just, this is the last board meeting before the Westmont Trick or Treat Trail. It's a week from Saturday, October 26th. It's 11 to 1, downtown Westmont, from Dallas in the south to Chicago Naperville in the north. We have 53 businesses participating this year, so get your costume ready, come on out, visit the businesses. They're gonna be doing some specials, and we want to encourage everybody to come downtown. Again, that's October 26th, from 11 to 1. And while I'm here, I also want to put in a plug for the State of the Village address, which is gonna be Wednesday, October 30th. It's gonna be at the brand-new neat kitchen and bar. 11:30 check-in, 12 o'clock lunch to be followed by the, a very informative presentation on what's going on with our village, and what our vision is from our new mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, to go along with that, on the 26th, after you do the Trick or Treat Trail, that evening, the Haunted Forest.
The Haunted Forest is going on, and that is a magnificent event, right down here in the south side. The Park District's running it, and there's more information at wpdforfun.com. Thanks.
It's at Twin Lakes Park. Since no other open forum, I'll close the open forum, go to reports. The first one is the mayor's report, and I have several. The first one's Emergency Communications Center. I'll ask our fire chief, if he could please come to the podium and introduce and explain to us what a great job some of our men are doing, and women.
Thanks, Mayor and Board. I, of course, have a few of our members and key members that organize and run our ECC here tonight, and I'm gonna turn it over to Dave Lincoln, our captain. He's very involved in our ECC, and let him and his members explain the program.
Mayor, trustees, fire chief Weiss, and guests, thank you for the opportunity for us to give a brief presentation about the Storm Ready program that Westmont has been a member of for three years now. We are currently in the process of being recertified for another three years. What is Storm Ready? Storm Ready is a community preparedness program in the United States that encourages government entities and commercial gathering sites to prepare for severe weather events. The program is sponsored by the United States National Weather Service, and issues recognition to communities and sites across the country that demonstrate severe weather readiness. This program is voluntary, and provides communities with clear-cut advice from a partnership with the local National Weather Service Office, state and local emergency managers, and the media. The program has been credited with saving countless lives in the communities that participate in the Storm Ready program. Why do we need Storm Ready? Approximately 90% of all presidentially declared disasters are weather-related. On average, there are over 500 weather-related deaths each year across America. Severe weather causes nearly $14 billion in property damage each year. There are 1,299 communities in Illinois. Illinois currently has 61 Storm Ready communities. DuPage County itself is a Storm Ready certified county. Besides Westmont, there are 10 additional communities in DuPage County that are also Storm Ready, along with two universities and one private ambulance company. The Westmont Emergency Management Agency, EMA, is the primary organization in Westmont responsible for maintaining the program. We have utilized Storm Ready preparedness by creating a severe weather action plan for all of our major events that occur in Westmont. Examples of the two major public events that EMA has prepared plans for are the Taste of Westmont, and the Red, White, and Barbecue Event. A severe weather action plan is well thought out and prepared prior to these events. This gives the organizers of these events direction on exactly what will take place if a severe thunderstorm with damaging winds, severe lightning, or possibly hail does occur. Worst-case scenario, a tornado that might be approaching one of these events that have well over 1,000 people in attendance at any given time. EMA is responsible for preparing the village for any severe weather event that occurs on any given day that could have an impact on the safety of its residents. In April of 2011, the village of Westmont received a technology grant for just over $18,800 to improve our emergency operations center and our emergency communications center located in Westmont at 500 North Cass Avenue. Some of the purchases included a weather station, weather software, and many computer and radio upgrades that enhance our communication abilities. With these technology improvements and our strong volunteer commitment, Westmont has become one of the most highly recognized communities in DuPage County when it comes to severe weather preparedness.
What we wanna do now is just give a quick recap over two major events that happened here in Westmont over this past year, and how the Storm Ready has assisted and helped out, and why it's so important that we remain storm-ready. The first one happened on April 17th. I don't know if you all remember that one. Westmont received 6.9 inches of rain in less than 10-hour period. Over 40% of the roads in the village were underwater, impassable. Our EMA was fully activated at that time, along with our emergency communications center and emergency operating center were fully activated and staffed. And greatly, I can say, there was no loss of life in this village due to that flood. Just real quick, a couple of graphs that show that the rainfall was just over 3 and 1/2 inches per hour during the morning hours. I believe that was from 6 to 8 o'clock in the morning was the heaviest rain that we got. The bottom slide shows the entire month of April. We had a little bit of rain beforehand, and that's where, you know, the ground became saturated, and then, you know what happened from there. We got, it was like 5 inches, 4 inches, 4 and 1/2 inches one day. The next day was 6.9. So, the water just really had nowhere to go. The damage that occurred from that, just a couple of quick pictures. One of these was up on Ogden Avenue, and you can see the cars that are underwater. Unfortunately, that business is no longer there. There's several, there were several houses in town that showed significant damage. If you can see, the water actually comes about midway on the door. The next, you know, fairly heavy event that happened was on October 5th of this year. You can see that we're tracking a storm that came through. It actually came out of nowhere. We were watching it, and it was producing no rain at all. And then, all of a sudden, it turned into what you see there on the right, and in about 30 minutes, it dropped an inch and 1/2 of rain. It caused some minor flooding here in town, not a lot. Most of it was cleared out within about a half an hour afterwards, but it did cause some flooding. Want this one? Okay. The Storm Ready recertification is what we're going through right now. There's several things that we need to do, and if I miss something, I'm sure, you know, David will correct me. But we need to increase community preparedness by spotter and dispatcher severe weather training. We have weather training every single year for village-wide. The EMA weather team, which you see most of them standing right here, they go to several different classes. I believe it's four classes a year, and it gets pretty intense. They teach you how to read that radar, how to react. Next is the public weather safety presentation, which is really what we do with the village-wide. The next is, the most important is, the EMA has to make a visitation out to the National Weather Service in Romeo ville. That's one of the last steps that we have to do to maintain our certification with the Storm Ready program. As of January 2012, there's over 1,800 Storm Ready sites in the continental United States. And for anybody who wants to look at our weather station that we did purchase with that grant, here's a website that you guys, that anybody can go ahead and log into, and they'll see real-time weather data of what's happening here at 500 North Cass.
And there also is an app that you can put on your smartphone or iPhone from weatherlink.com.
And the last thing is, the EMA is always looking for new energetic people to join our group that really wanna make a difference here in town. So, if you have any, you know, you want more information on it, please address an email, and we will definitely get back with you.
Chris, if you, a lot of people may not realize, EMA does a lot more than just storm-watching.
Oh, absolutely.
And it's a volunteer. Why don't you quickly, you know, a couple others, different things that you do for the community?
Well, I'm gonna pass that over to...
Greg?
Greg. Yes.
I think sometimes people don't really understand all that you really perform in the community.
Hi, my name is Greg Banky. I am the Deputy Coordinator of Operations for Westmont's Emergency Management. And didn't know I was gonna be up here to speak, so I'll just kinda wing this. Emergency management is called on by either the police or fire department to assist in any type of emergency or situation where the police department or fire department needs extra manpower. This could be an accident, a traffic accident, a train accident, crowd control, just about any situation where the police department will get taxed by their, the men that they have on the street, who are qualified to go out and direct traffic, take over a situation, and ride it to the end to, you know, a safe conclusion. We have three teams available, Team 1, Team 2, and Team 3. Team 1 is basically signed on to say we're available 24 hours a day to give me a call, and if I'm available, I'll be out there. Team 2 is more of a, when I'm available, give me a call, and I'll be happy to come out. And Team 3 is the team that comes out to our big events, the barbecue, the taste, the fireworks, and they come out to assist us with whatever we need. It's a great group of people, proud to be a leader. I can't do it alone. Obviously, there's a bunch of great people behind me, and Dave Weiss, in supporting us. We do what we can. We're happy to do what we can, and I wanna thank you for letting us do that.
And we really appreciate what you do. Everybody who's saying, 4th of July or holidays, and we sit and we enjoy what goes on, you guys are the ones that are directing traffic, directing, helping out with behind-the-scenes stuff. So, and again, it's a non-paid volunteer position, so we really appreciate it.
I think one thing that, I know the board's always asking, how many hours do these gentlemen put in a year? And we estimated about a thousand, a little over 1,000 hours of time they put in, in 2012. If you take the national standard, what they figure what an hour wage is for volunteering, it's about $250,000 in savings that they did to the village. We're up to 40 members now. We're looking to go up to 50 members. I just wanna thank them personally once I got the podium for this last Sunday at our special event. If it wasn't for their 18 or 20 members out there controlling the traffic and getting our residents across Cass Avenue so safely that they did, the event wouldn't have been a success. And they put a lot of hours and a lot of effort, and, you know, if we had to pay the police back, it would've drained my budget, I think. But, you know, but thank God we have the EMA members to assist us. Does anybody have any other questions?
I think we owe you all a big thanks for all you do in the community. Thank you. Thank you. I have a couple other individuals or groups I'd like to call up, and then, the next one is Gino Grabasti. I said that right, I hope? And our Westmont Wildcat and Cheer program, our football and cheerleading program, has been quite successful the last several years, and Gino's the president, and I asked him tonight to come and just give a little plug for the program and how successful we've been this year. Gino?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Board. I'd like to read something that I wrote real quick. I just jotted it down. I didn't have time after work today. But, in my opinion, the Westmont Wildcats Football and Cheer program is a valuable part of our community. Football and cheerleading, like life, requires perseverance, self-denial, hard work, sacrifice, dedication, and respect. One of my favorite quotes about football is, "Today I will do what others won't, so tomorrow I can accomplish what others can't." Football and cheerleading, unlike many other sports, do not focus on individual performance. Both sports demand that kids work together with a high degree of trust for one another to accomplish one goal. Kids learn valuable life lessons that they will hopefully never forget, and that they will use as they become adults. In many instances, a kid needs football more than football needs them. We often tell the kids from the first day of practice that just showing up, knowing all the hard work that lies ahead, is a great accomplishment, and says great things about their character. All the coaches are highly dedicated, and value the fact that they are not just teaching a sport, but also preparing the kids for life. This is why I believe that the community must always support the Westmont Wildcat program and the kids who participate in it. I urge the people of this community and its leaders to come out and enjoy some football games. Support the kids who choose to overcome many obstacles on the road to becoming champions of their sport and champions in life. Football does not expose weakness. It reveals strengths. With that being said, we are division champions, and we are on our way to hopefully a league championship, and it's been a long time coming. And we have one other team who is still in the hunt, so congratulations to them.
And their home games are played at Westmont High School, and you have one coming up?
Yes, we have two more home games left, one this Sunday, one the next Sunday, and then we go into playoffs. And what a lot of people don't realize is, we are in a national program, so if the kids win, win out the playoffs, then they go in December, they go to play for a national championship in Tampa, Florida.
Wow. And last year, we had a national champ, one of our cheerleading squads.
Yes.
Came first in the nation.
Yeah, first in the nation, one of our cheerleading squads were, so...
Okay, congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. (applause) And then, if you look around the audience, you see that we have Boy Scouts here tonight. I know we had one Boy Scout lead us in the pledge. I'd like to have, I don't know if Jim Flynn or Marty, if you wanna come up and explain to everybody what you're doing here. I kinda know, but let everybody else know.
All right, thank you very much. What the Boy Scouts are here for tonight is, we're a Westmont-based troop six out of Westmont, and we're chartered by the American Legion Hall of Post 338. And the boys are here as part of a community badge called Citizenship in the Community. They're here in order to find out about the, what it's gonna take to earn this badge, and just to give you some of the highlights on this, each boy here will be required, as part of this badge, to serve at least eight hours of community service in this badge to a local organization. And times are 12, boys, that's almost 100 hours that we'll be donating. They also have to learn and listen to at least one issue and compare and contrast the sides of it, and then kinda defend it about what do they think would be the best thing for the village and why, and to try and get them to become better citizens is the overall objective of this. So, we thank you for your, you know, notice here, and that's really about it. Thanks.
And I know Marty's been involved and very instrumental in the troop staying in Westmont, and American Legion sponsored you, so we're happy to have them here, and they're all future EMA.
Yep.
There you go.
Should start recruiting them, but thank you. Appreciate you coming. The last item I have, I know we have a special board meeting. We called, and I asked Larry McIntyre to please just kinda give a summary of why we're having a special meeting on Saturday, and where it's gonna be, and there's still, everybody's welcome.
Absolutely. As you may know, we started the Coffee with the Mayor events this past year. I think the first one was in June, and they've been really well-received, and actually, with each event, we've had growing attendance. It's an opportunity for citizens to come out, talk with the mayor, talk about issues, ask questions, talk to staff, things of that nature. Well, this Saturday, which is the 19th, we're doing a special Coffee with the Mayor event, in which the entire board has been invited to attend, and so it's gonna be more of a town hall format meeting, in which folks will get a chance to talk to all of our elected officials, and we're gonna be focusing on the topic of South Side Initiative. So, we'll be talking about economic development, and Dr. Riley, who's the new superintendent for the Marker School District, she'll be in attendance and get a chance to introduce herself to everybody. And bottom line is, we wanna continue to build relationships between downtown and the south side of our community. So, that's gonna be at Harvest Restaurant this Saturday. And I hesitate giving the time, because we need people to RSVP. Should I go ahead and give the time?
Give the time and tell them to RSVP, because what's Harvest, they're also providing a full meal for us.
Well, that is true. That is true. So, we're limited to a total of 75 folks who can attend the event to RSVP, and we're already more than halfway there. But, to RSVP, you need to call our admin office, and that's 630-981-6216. And the event begins at 2:00 PM. Once again, it's a Harvest Restaurant.
And 63rd and Williams, basically.
Approximately.
Approximately. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And that is all I have, so Clerk Simmsky.
I just want to congratulate Fire Chief Weiss and the whole department on a terrific open house on Sunday from 1 to 4. It was supposed to be, well, I believe it went on to almost, it went on at least to 5, maybe even beyond 5, because nobody wanted to leave. The kids were having fun. Everybody was having a good time, so congratulations and thanks again. And just to remind everybody, it is October, and it's Halloween time, and kids are out running around, so be very careful driving. You know, it's getting dark a little earlier, but our kids are still wanting to be outside, because the weather's not horrible yet. And Halloween will be coming up, so just be real cautious and look for them, please. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Attorney Zemanak.
Thanks. Not due to a lack of activity, I don't have anything to report.
Manager Searle. Thank you. Just one item, and I hope I'm not taking...
Thank you, just one item, and I hope I'm not taking this away from someone else, but I just wanted to mention that we have a special meeting scheduled for October 24th. There's a community stormwater group that's been working very hard, looking at the problems that we have, the study we had done, and recommendations are going to be discussed at that meeting that'll be Thursday, the 24th, at 7:00 PM here at the Village Hall. And that's all I have.
Thank you. The trustees, we'll start on this side with, we'll go in the middle, Trustee Addington.
The only thing that I, well, I have two things. One, Clerk Zimsky already said, watch out for our kids, it is going to be Halloween in a couple of weeks, and we want to be sure that they have a safe and fun and good one. And then the other, again, is to congratulate the fire department. For some of us that are a little longer a tooth, remember when it was a volunteer department, and how they used to go out, and some of the old guys, older, firemen can, will remember too, how they used to go out and try to raise money because they couldn't even afford to put furniture into the day room in the old, in the old fire station here before we rebuilt Village Hall. And to see that department come from those days to this quality department that we have today that we can be so very, very proud of, it's amazing. And it was a great day, and it's fun to see the progression over all these years, but to see where we're at today. So again, congratulations to our fire service, they do a phenomenal job.
Trustee Barry.
I just have one thing this evening. Last week, there was a meeting between myself, Trustee Addington, Larry McIntyre, members of the WSCC to discuss the idea of creating some special events for the upcoming year. And one of the theories, again, as Jim said, some of the old timers and longtime residents, one of the ideas was to bring back some old-fashioned games. We've discussed everything from bathtub races, tug-of-woars, food eating challenges. The bottom line is that we'd like to get all the community organizations involved so that we can build relationships with the groups in between the community. Organizations such as the Lions, the KC Chamber, library, school districts, but also possibly the PTOs, various sporting groups, the Wildcats through the Park District. We would like all these different community groups to have teams. There's going to be a lot of details coming in the future, so this is kind of a teaser tonight. Details are still being worked out, but they really will be emerging in the next few weeks, and we really look to have a community involvement, and so kind of start getting your teams together.
Are you going to let Rotary participate?
Rotary, yes, is, would be one of those groups, yes. And so again, this is kind of a teaser tonight, but there'll be a lot more information to come, and another way that we can kind of become more of a, of a community and get to know our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Scott.
Nothing this evening.
Over this side, Trustee Barker.
Thank you, I have one item tonight. Westmont First met on October 9th, we had another good meeting, a nice turnout, had some new people, and out of that meeting, we came up with our first event, and that is actually started today, and it's called Don't Be Afraid to Shop Downtown Westmont, and this was to help the businesses in the downtown area because of the track closing. Obviously, the car traffic there is, is really dropped, and people are having a hard time or trying to avoid that area. The local businesses in that area put together some specials and incentives to get people down to their shops during the next, what is that, that's nine days there, in the downtown area. I wanted to announce those businesses. One was Uncle John's Music, the Center for Dance, Brut Awakenings, L.K. Media, KH Renovations, The Framemakers, Sweet and Savory Spot, the Westmont Chamber Commerce, the Westmont Special Events Corporation, La Petite Suite, and Dilworth Windows and Doors. Now, they all have promotions to bring people to the downtown area, and we're thrilled with them participating in this first event for Westmont First. And we're asking everybody to go to the website and get this information, and take a look at those specials, and continue to patronize the businesses in the downtown area. Whether they participated in this or not, think about them over the next seven to eight days as this railroad crossing gets fixed, and we're excited about that. We also have another event that we're working on, and that is when I see all the Boy Scouts here. We're working on a program for November 9th in conjunction with some community groups. We're asking people to volunteer their efforts to do some community leaf raking for the folks in town that need that extra help, that can't afford to have some, a service come in and do it, or just physically can't do that particular job. So it's, you know, it's as simple as helping your neighbor, somebody across the street with their leaf raking and yard cleanup this fall. So that date is November 9th, and if anybody would like to participate in that, please contact Larry McIntyre at 630-981-6245, and he's going to be the point person on getting the groups together, and getting the information out to those groups. We already have Holy Trinity Church is participating in that, the Rotary has talked about participating in that, and we'd like to have anybody that's able or willing to do that. Maybe we'll get some village trustees involved in that, but.
Scouts.
Scouts, yeah, I already tapped them in the EMA. But anyway, you know, it's one of these things, it's one of these things to, to help the community and, you know, to take it out into the neighborhoods and do something for the residents that need our help. Thank you.
You know, you mentioned, I don't know if I can ask, I know we got two trustees left, but Chief Mulhern, can you just quickly, the railroad tracks are, the crossing is closed, can you give a real quick summary on what's going on and where people need to cross?
They're closed.
They're closed, there you go, that's quick, thank you.
Yes, it started at 4:00 this morning, the crossing is closed. If you go by now, Burlington Northern is working on tearing up the crossing. We've been told it'll be eight days, weather driven, depending on weather, so let's all hope that the weather today is not repeated. They were out there working in the rain, however. We do have officers and crossing guards posted for schoolchildren either going to Holy Trinity, to and from Holy Trinity, and also to Manning School. We were out there this morning, and we had six children that we assisted crossing, so we're going to see what happens. The main detour is Fairview Avenue, however, I can tell you from experience this morning, Fairview Avenue was backed up south of 55th Street as of 8:30 in the morning. Main Street was a little bit better. Our recommendation is to take Route 83 because then that way you'll be over. However, in talking with Director May, Route 83 is also experiencing traffic, as we did when Claret Hills closed, it's just the adjacent thing. So plan for extra time, eight days, and just hope for good weather.
And Chief, you can cross here at the train.
The pedestrian crossing.
Yes, just west of the train crossing, or just rest of the train depot is a pedestrian crossing, so you can either park your car on one side and walk over. That's what I spoke to a lot of people, and they're doing their parking on one side and going to the other, which would make your time a little bit quicker, but for pedestrians, it's crossed, and that's what we're using for our school crossings.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Now, Trustee Nero.
Thank you. I just want to talk a little bit about the Stormwater Committee. As we heard from the manager, next Thursday at 7:00 PM, the 24th, we are going to have our initial presentation to the board. But before I go into what that's going to entail, I really want to start off by thanking the 14-member committee. I couldn't, I really couldn't say enough about them. Each one has stepped up to the plate and put emotions aside, many of them not even affected by flooding, believe it or not, and are still willing to give that much back to the community, and really put in a lot of hours and a real big commitment to, to this problem that I think is one of the biggest problems facing Westmont right now. So with that being said, one of the initial initiatives we did was a rain barrel, rain water barrel discount program. And prior to starting this, I believe it was first week of September of this year, 2013, the village sold six rain barrels. Since then, we've sold over 120 rain barrels, so that's just shows to show you only about a month what we, what we were able to do. So, the word's getting out, it's a, it's a real good program. If you haven't already, please take advantage of it. Two rain barrels maximum per address, $35 each, it's a, it's a real great program. I have a couple installed, and they, they work really great, so I would recommend everybody to jump on board that. And then next thing, you know, lastly really, I just want to give everybody a little idea of what to expect next Thursday. I can tell you that the main thing that we, you know, we're focusing on is the flooding issues that affect the entire village. So it's not just one particular area, one particular project, it's the entire village comprehensively. And some of the things we're going to talk about are prioritization of areas that have stormwater needs. We're going to discuss green stormwater management strategies that reduces the impact of rain water before it ever reaches the storm sewer system, which might also make us eligible for some various grant programs. We're going to recommend creating village code that will help reduce flooding, village flooding issues in neighborhoods that have ongoing problems, and we're also going to give the recommendation of creating policy that will encourage and implement a proactive stormwater management program within the village. The bottom line is that we cannot begin to work on these important projects until we have discussed and identified a revenue source of these projects. So the committee will talk about financing options for this project and make a recommendation to the village board. So I encourage everybody to come to the, the board meeting next Thursday, have an open mind and listen to the presentation. These residents put a lot into this, it's really good stuff, so I'm excited to see it. Hopefully, the village board is real receptive, and collectively, we can start tackling these problems. That's all I have.
I know you've got to represent in every area in the community, you've got 14 or 15 individuals that have put a lot of work in, so.
That's correct, yeah.
We're looking forward to hearing it.
Thank you.
Trustee Seneca.
Thank you. Just to echo everyone's comments on the 90th anniversary of our fire department, it was wonderful, but to piggyback and add on, also congratulations to the Johannick family, because now that building is officially named after former fire chief Frank Johannick, who made multiple, just numerous, you can't even count, the contributions that he's made to Westmont and to the fire department. And to say thank you to Jimmy Wright, who made that beautiful sign on each side of the building, so it was a great day, thank you. Then I have something, it's just sort of a maybe, it's very exciting, but one of our business owners downtown was approached by the producers of the film, you may remember the film, The Lake House with, I think Sandra Bullock and maybe Keanu Reeves. Well, those producers are filming another movie in the area, and this business owner, Novel Experience, was approached today about perhaps filming a scene there for their upcoming movie, which is being filmed in this area. So, it's not in stone yet, they've had a couple of visits there today, there is a contract kind of going back and forth. It's going to happen very quickly, so just sort of a warning to staff, if it happens, hopefully we'll be able to work with them and move things along to make sure that they can come in and do the filming. They don't expect that it'll be a street closing or anything like that, but there will be some special needs that they'll require, and if there's anything that the board has to vote on, we'll just, you know, quickly, with 48 hours' notice, do a, do a meeting and get it approved, and I don't know, Mayor Gunter, if you want to add anything to that, but.
I think the, the business, I don't know the exact address, but about a half block north of the tracks.
Right.
On Cass on the west side, and I think if we want to, we've done this before, give, give tentative approval if the sidewalk has to be used, and then come back to the next meeting and give it formal approval, so, does any of the trustees have any?
The filming would actually be on the 29th of October, so we don't have another meeting.
I don't have an issue with it.
I don't either, and I think, as, as was mentioned to me, when I was talking about it with Janet, I went over there, and, you know, Westmont will probably get mentioned in some credit somewhere, that some of the filming where it was done, so, and I think it's always positive. It's amazing to me how they, they look for things, you know, I guess they're doing the filming in Downers.
A lot of it.
And, and I said, but they have a bookstore, and she, well, she said, it's not right.
No, they wanted a little cute.
They wanted that cute little, so that's why they've come to Westmont. I remember we used the administration building at the Park District because they thought it made a perfect-looking police station. So, you know, no use trying to figure out these, these Hollywood mongrels, but I think it's positive for Janet, it's positive for us.
And aside from, you know, the publicity I know we'll get from the newspaper, since she's sitting here.
Yeah, amen.
You know, it'll be nice, because we'll actually appear in the credits, you know, Novel Exchange Bookstore in Westmont, Illinois, Janet Archwell, so, so everybody keep your fingers crossed that the contract, that everything works out, so, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Moving to agenda item six, items removed from the consent agenda. Do any of the board members want any of these items removed? If not, the consent agenda, Manager Searle, would you please read?
Thank you. The following items are, are on the consent agenda. We have the village board meeting minutes from October 3rd, 2013. We have the finance ordinance number 13 in the amount of $1,65,222.17, and then under purchase orders, we have purchase order 11032063 to the Westmont Chamber Commerce for $30,000, has to do with the Economic Development Partnership that was previously presented to the board. And then we have purchase order 11032032, Don Morris Architects in the amount $11,968.79. Both those purchase orders are budgeted, so the total amount of the purchase orders is $41,968.79, and the complete total of purchase orders and finance ordinance is $1,107,190.96.
Have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved, Seneca.
Second, Scott.
Motion made in second, and on the question, any of the trustee, anybody in the audience or any of the trustees, seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Agenda item eight, unfinished business. Westmont First Committee, board to consider a motion to approve the mayor's appointment of Shane Johnson of Sweet and Savory to the Westmont First Committee.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Addington.
Second, Scott.
Second, Scott. On the questioner on clarification, Bruce, would you like to, he round out your committee, or are you still?
We, we welcome them with open arms, we still need a couple more folks, one from Pasquinnelli, and one from Marker School District, so if you know some good people that want to get involved with the core team on Westmont First, let me know, but Shane is going to be a great asset.
No question.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Unfinished B, Bradford Real Estate, Mariano's Financial Incentive Package, or to approve an ordinance regarding a TIF financial incentive package consisting of a revenue note and an economic development agreement for the purpose of constructing a Mariano's grocery store at 150 West 63rd Street.
I asked Manager Searle, would you please read, and I'm going to ask our attorney to make a comment.
The background on the matter is that a $3 million revenue note plus interest is payable through a 50% rebate of sales tax generated by this development, along with 50% of the TIF real estate tax generated by this development until the note is paid in full. The village is only liable for payments to the extent that it receives real estate sales tax as a result of development activity. Repayment will not be a, a general obligation note.
Attorney Zemec.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll, I'll provide a, kind of a brief overview of the creation of this TIF district, the purpose of a TIF district real briefly, and the structure of this proposed deal with Bradford Real Estate. I know the board's been through the whole process and is aware of it, but mainly for the public's benefit. In March of this year, the village board approved the creation of the Southwestmont Business District, TIF District, which is an economic redevelopment tool available to municipalities to help areas that are bladed or underdeveloped to economically redevelop. Basically, what happens is there's a baseline for real estate taxes as of the date that the TIF district is created. As the village receives those real estate taxes, they get paid out in that baseline amount to the various taxing districts. But as real estate taxes increase over the life of the TIF district, which is 23 years, the village gets to keep that increment or that increase in real estate taxes and can use that money, one, for really two purposes. One is to make public improvements within the identified TIF district, such as street improvements, water mains, sewers, signage, and other public improvements which will help attract development to the district. The other purpose is to take that money and use it as an economic incentive to help finance redevelopment within the district. And there are certain eligible expenses that the TIF Act allows a village to pay to developers for redevelopment purposes. It can't be used for building, a building, for example, but it can be used for necessary public improvements such as stormwater detention, wetlands mitigation, intersection improvements, things such as that. The reason for creating a TIF district The reason for creating a TIF district is that the village hired a TIF consultant who determined that this Southwestmont Business District was underdeveloped and, in some cases, blighted, as defined by the TIF Act, and would not redevelop were not for the creation of this TIF district and these financial incentives that could be available to developers. So now it's up to the village to determine, as this TIF increment is generated, how to use that money best to serve the district. One, the village can identify projects to do on its own, or two, it can hear from developers who wish to redevelop in the area and determine if the expenses are, you know, eligible and worth spending. Which brings us to the, the case in, in front of the board, which is Bradford Real Estate, which is proposing to build a Mariano's Fresh Market Grocery Store at 150 West 63rd Street. The village owns eight acres of property and has agreed to a real estate contract to sell that property to Bradford for the appraised value. Bradford has come before this village with its proposed plans for a Mariano's and has received all zoning approvals, has been performing their due diligence and financial analysis, and has determined that there is a gap in their financing due to some extraordinary development costs, which they will explain to the board tonight. And they've approached the village asking for some financial assistance due to the creation of this TIF district to help make this development possible. And they've informed the village that without the financial assistance, this development will not happen. So we have an agreement called an economic development agreement that does two things. One, it outlines what the obligations are of the developer to develop the Mariano's, the timeframe for them to do so, and a timeframe by which the store has to be open for business. Secondly, it provides for payment of certain economic incentives or reimbursements to the developer. The developer is going to front all of the money to redevelop this site and construct and open a Mariano's Fresh Market Grocery Store. As the village receives tax increment on this property, which again is an increase in the real estate taxes over this baseline amount, the village is going to reimburse the developer 50% of the tax increment received over a course of a period of years until the total sum of $3 million plus interest is repaid to the developer for the money they have fronted. That $3 million is also going to be repaid by the village from a sales tax rebate or sharing agreement. As the village receives sales taxes from this Mariano's, once it's opened, 50% of the sales tax will be rebated back to the developer, again, until they reach that total of $3 million. So there's two sources of payment, the TIF increment and the sales tax. And we anticipate maybe eight to 13 years of payments until the developer is paid back their, their gap in financing that they've identified. This is not a general obligation of the village, this repayment obligation. There is not going to be a bond issue for repaying this. There will be no impact on the taxpayers unless you consider, well, there's lack of sales tax coming in because it's being rebated. But again, the, I think the developer can talk about the anticipated sales tax revenue that this development will create. We've distributed the draft agreement to you now about a week and a half ago. It was recently revised over the last few days with a few tweaks here and there, and you have that in front of you. And with that said, I guess, turn it over to Bradford to talk about their, their project.
My name is Jay Eck. I'm with Bradford Real Estate. I'm here with Chad Jones. He's our chief financial officer. John, as usual, you did an excellent job giving a very detailed overview of the TIF and our request. So you've stolen a little bit of my thunder, but I will try and briefly run through, at a very high level, our request and some of the financial implications, and then we're here to answer any questions that you may have. As John indicated, this is in a TIF district, and we have a project that we proposed, the proposed Mariano's, that was approved unanimously by the plan commission, as well as unanimous approval by, by the board as well. Our project, we project that the total project cost will be about $20 million. Within that $20 million, there's, there's in excess of about $7.5 million of TIF allowable expenses. We are here tonight requesting a reimbursement of, through a revenue note, of roughly $3 million. We have a number of expenses, certainly a number of extraordinary costs associated with this project that make up a portion of the $7.5 million of qualifiable expenses. Primarily, that's allocated to wetlands mitigation that's currently on the site, needs to be mitigated off-site. We have to provide for stormwater detention underground in an enclosed vault, which is very expensive. Much less expensive to do that above ground, but because of the requirements and needs of Mariano's, their high parking requirement, we don't have enough land to do that above ground. So it's going to be under the parking lot, as our engineers explained when we were before you discussing our project. And the third major component is signal, signalization on 63rd, as well as 63rd Street road widening. These are all improvements that you're aware of, but I just want to highlight them as being extraordinary and unusual cost for this development. The $3 million is, is required to make this project feasible and to enable it to go forward on a market return and enable us to get it financed and get this off the ground. As John mentioned, the $3 million will be reimbursed purely out of the increment generated by this development in the form of sales tax and real estate tax increment. So in a sense, we're reimbursing ourself. We Bradford will front the $3 million. We'll invest that in the project, and the, the only way we can get it back is if the project itself generates it. As John mentioned again, it's not a general obligation bond, so we are taking the full financial risk of the $3 million and the reimbursement of that. In terms of revenue generated, we anticipate that the Mariano's will generate sales in year one between $45 and $50 million. So that, that in itself should generate about $450,000 to $500,000. In addition, we believe that the real estate tax, you know, based on DuPage County rates, will probably be about $3 per square foot, or roughly $200,000, $210,000. So the combination of those two should generate around $700,000. That's our estimate. We would retain half, obviously, the village would retain half. And, and as John mentioned, we anticipate this getting paid off in less than 10 years. Eight would be, would be a quick payback, and it could go up to 12 or 13 years, but we expect it to be less than 10. Mariano's has found that their sales increase have been pretty dramatic and certainly much more than what their competition has seen. So there, there's a strong ramp up in sales beyond year one. It's not just a, a strong number out of the gate and then it falls off. It continues to rise. So with that, we're here to answer, you know, any questions that you have, go into any more details about the request. Thank you.
All right, before, the attorney's got another comment.
Yeah, just a few more clarifications. The, if for some reason the store were to underperform, and we get to the end of the 23-year term of the TIF district, and this $3 million is for some reason not repaid, then the village's obligation goes away. I think the sales tax runs maybe a couple of years beyond the 23 years.
Right, right.
But, but no more than, I think, 25 years maximum.
Right.
So there is an end date to this repayment obligation if, for some reason, the sale, the, the store underperforms. Likewise, if the store doesn't open for business, this obligation goes away. And then, let's see, I had a, oh, I had a question or a comment just about the idea of issuing debt. Yes, this is an obligation of the village, a financial obligation of the village, which is confirmed in a revenue note. It's not debt that's being issued in this year. The revenue note will not be issued, like signed off by the mayor and actually issued until the closing of the property to Bradford contingent upon, again, the store opening, et cetera. So it's not debt incurred in this year, and again, it's not, if, if there are no sales tax generated or no TIF increment generated from real estate taxes, this is not an obligation of the village out of its general funds at all.
Thank you. Before I get to the trustee questions, I open it up to anybody in the audience who'd like to comment on this. Come on up and state your name, and I'll let you...
Good evening. My name is Mary Gabriel, and I'm a resident of Westmont in the Ashford subdivision. I have a quick question for you on the developer note. I noticed the interest rate is at 5.5%, which is roughly 250 basis points over prime rate. Was wondering how that rate compares to the rate you got on the $11 million of bonds that you were going to market for last month.
I'll, I'll try to explain that the best I can. So the, the bond that the village went for is completely separate and apart from this financing.
Understand, but I'm just curious of the interest rates.
I'll tie it in. And, and the village can get a better interest rate on the bond. However, the interest rate we're paying is not an interest rate for the village carrying money, it's the interest rate for the developer carrying this money. Because again, they're fronting $20 million financing this and carrying that until they get repaid. They're getting repaid a portion of money from the village at, basically at their interest rate, and that's how it was calculated.
And Spencer, what is the rate on the bonds? I figured Spencer Parker, if you, just to...
Mary, I didn't catch your last name.
Gabriel, G.A.B.R.Y.E.L.
Thank you.
I don't recall for sure, but I believe it was right around 4.5% was the average. Each of the different years for the bonds is a different rate, but I think the total came to about 4.5%. So as John mentioned, it's a little bit higher interest rate than we would get if we were to do our own bond, but one of the major reasons that we preferred this method as opposed to getting our own bond is because of the liability. So that, because this is contingent upon how well the store performs and all of those issues, we're not taking on the initial liability. We thought about, you know, getting into a bond initially, the possibility, that's what some municipalities do, but it was determined that our best interest would be served in doing it this way, in case there's anything, as the individuals from Bradford mentioned, they're taking on the liability if something doesn't work out, rather than the village. So we're very happy with doing it this way, even though the interest rate is a little higher than the other method. We think it's in the best interest to the village.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the clarification.
Is that it? Okay, thank you, Mary. Anybody else? If you'd like to, if not, then we're going to open it up for trustees. Comments? Questions?
I would just like to say thank you to, to Mayor Gunther because this, this issue did come up, and I think the agreement that he worked out, working with staff and the attorney with John and with the folks from Bradford, is an unbelievably fantastic deal. And just kudos to everybody that got involved in this thing because it's really a win-win for everybody, including the village in this case, because we get a great developer. We're not, we're making some incentives, and I think everyone has heard me say before, and I'll say it again, this is, this is economic development 101 here, folks. If we want folks like Bradford, this is what we have to do. And, and again, just kudos to everybody that got involved because I think this agreement and this deal that was worked out is just amazing to me, and, and I'm glad everybody got involved, and I can't wait for them to get started.
Thank you.
I want them to dig ground tomorrow, but I know that he can handle it.
Trustee Barker.
Two comments. You know, I, I had looked at the Bradford material and found them to be a first-class developer. I wonder if they have any information that they could share with the public, because we've been in this a little bit deeper, about how many visitors they, you know, they usually have in their store on a regular basis in a, this type of development? And then what kind of economic development surrounds a, a project like this, you know, and other properties?
Good question.
Because I know that's critical to the South TIF.
And also, how many jobs do you estimate will be created? I think that's important for...
Great questions.
So, one of your questions was, as a result of, of the Mariano's, what might you anticipate happening around it?
Right.
Correct? And your other question was?
People visiting a Mariano's on a daily basis.
Okay. As far as the daily traffic, I, I don't know that I'm the appropriate person to answer that. I, we don't have a representative from Mariano's here. I can tell you that they employ 400 people. And again, we anticipate them doing between $45 and $50 million a year, which is substantial. But the breakdown of, of customers per, per day, I do not know. We've got, I think, in ex, well, in excess of 500 stalls, and I, I can tell you, based on the other stores we've developed, they'll use every one of those stalls. So I, you know, if you can use that, how many people in a car per day if there's 500 cars?
Right, right. And that's exactly what I wanted the public to hear.
Yeah, yes.
That it generates business.
Yeah, substantial business. And, you know, we, we've had experiences in other communities where Mariano's went in, they opened up, and there was adjacent vacant land that had sat vacant for years and years and years. And in, in one case, we just presented, in fact, two nights ago, Tuesday night, a major home improvement store, 200,000-square-foot home improvement store, right next to the Mariano's, in addition to a number of outlet users. So that all happened within about a year, year and a half of the Mariano's opening. So this is real, it happens. Retailers love to be by, successful retailers. So it's kind of a herd mentality, and there's no doubt that the buzz about Mariano's is, is out there, and retailers love to be around them. So it's, it's a great situation.
As excited as we are to have you, what kind of a timeframe, tentative timeframe you're looking at?
Well, I think the biggest lead time for us is going to be approvals with the county on the traffic signal. So I think we anticipate that taking us until about maybe this time next year. Depending on when that happens, we probably wouldn't break ground until '15, and, and the store would open, it's anticipated, first quarter of '16.
Okay.
That's the schedule right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Other comments or questions from any of the trustees?
Ogden Avenue has always been the envy of a lot of communities around here because of our car dealers. This will now be happening on the south side of town at 63rd Street. And if you had to pick a company to bring into your town, this would be number one on our hit list. So I know we are the envy of many communities around us. Jealous, upset, good. Because it's about time for us.
That's right.
Amen.
Any other, sir? If not, then I would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as presented.
So moved. Eddington.
Second. Nero. Motion made in second. Any other questions? Spencer's jumping out of his seat, yes.
I did want to add just one further point of clarification. I was able to pull up the documents on our bond purchase, and for about 13, 14 years out, those specific bonds, the rate was 4%. The highest rate that we had for our longest-term bonds was the 4.5% rate that I quoted. So just as a point of clarification.
You want to go on record that it's less than 4.5% average?
Thank you.
Yes, at that point in time, it's 4%. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the motion's on, been made in second. Seeing no other questions, roll call, please.
Trustee Eddington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
And again, guys, congratulations, and we'll look forward to seeing you probably before us again. Thank you.
Can't wait.
And keep our staff informed as you're working with the county. If there's anything we can do to push them, we'll do it.
Happy to call you.
I think we're going to work with them. Thank you. Next agenda item, Town Homes of Fairmont. Amended agreements. Board to consider ordinance approving an amended development agreement and amended recapture agreement for the Town Homes of Fairmont project located at 6325 Fairview Avenue and 6333 Fairview Avenue. Manager Searle.
Okay, this is a unfinished, unfinished item of business. I believe the petitioner has to hold over, in 2001, the village board approved this project as a planned development. The villager, the village and developer are now seeking rectify and oversight regarding the agreements that were never signed and recorded with the county. And in the packet, the board has attached documentation regarding the issue.
Attorney Zeminek, anything to add?
Just that we postponed this last time, waiting for me to get back in touch with the developer's attorney to clarify... the developer's attorney to clarify a few finer points in the recapture agreement and get some information from staff, which I've now obtained, made some clarification, shipped it off to their attorney. You have paper copies, and I emailed today out copies of the revised agreement. This is essentially exactly what was approved in year 2001. The idea with the recapture agreement is that the developer installed certain public improvements at its expense, and there is one property that if redeveloped, could tie into those public improvements and benefit from them. And the developer, essentially through a recapture agreement, has the ability to recapture some of its costs from the developer, who gets the benefit of tying into the improvements that were made. I don't know if we have, it doesn't look like we've got an attorney or the developer here tonight. The ordinance does give me the authority to make any minor clarifications if I hear any last-minute clarifications from the developer's attorney. And we still need to pull out the plans that were approved in 2001 and attach them. Other than that, I think we're in good shape. And if anything significant comes up at the last minute from the attorney, we'll have this back in front of you.
Any questions? Anybody? Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as presented.
Motion approved, Scott. Second. Barker.
Motion made second, approve the ordinance. On the question, seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes. New business. A, 114 North Washington Street, variance approval request. Board to consider an ordinance approving a zoning code variance request from Jamie Tenucci? Hope I said that right. To allow for the construction of a front porch larger than 100 square feet with an existing non-conforming front yard setback. Manager Searle.
The proposal encroaches into the required front yard setback in the R3 district by approximately six feet. Because the front porch is 198 feet and larger than the allowed 100 square feet a variance is requested. At the public hearing, a neighbor from 136 North Washington spoke in favor of the request, and the adjacent neighbor to the south at 112 North Washington sent a letter in support that was attached. The commission voted unanimously to approve. The commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission noted that the homeowners are approving the property by rebuilding the front porch, and safety will be ensured. Many of the homes on the block also encroach in the front yard setback, so there is not a precedent as a result of this variance. Petitioner here.
The petitioner is?
Hi, my name's Matt Crow. I'm sorry, my wife, Jamie, she couldn't be here. She came home from work not feeling good, so I came up here. So I came up here to get approval to have our front porch. We wanted to tear it down and rebuild a new one, because the current one is run down, and it's just not looking very good. And unfortunately, in order to do it, if we wanted to do that, it doesn't meet with the new variance, the new zoning codes. So the zoning and board commission approved, or not approved, but gave their recommendations, saying it was, you know, they didn't have a problem with it. And I'm here for your approval to rebuild the new front porch.
Staff? Jill, anybody would like to add to that?
No, as we mentioned in the staff report, this does not create a precedent on the street. Many of the houses encroach up to the 25-foot setback line, which the applicant's house meets as well, so. And this was a unanimous recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you.
Lot coverage is fine?
Yes.
It doesn't have-
They meet, they're 35 percent lot coverage.
Anybody from the audience who'd like to question, comment? Trustees?
Has it been drawn, the porch redesign? Has that been drawn?
Yes.
It has been?
We caught it as part of the permits middle, but the drawings match the previous porch exactly.
I couldn't remember from planning and zoning if it had been drawn. Thank you. You don't have a copy? You might as well just put it up on the screen and- And we're tired of looking at the shop.
So, this is the front of their house, and this is the steps leading to it from their front sidewalk, and then the porch wraps around to the side and is adjacent to their driveway. It's about six feet in depth and about four feet in depth on the side, so it's not a large front porch, but it is slightly over what's allowed by code.
Again, staff has no issues with it?
No issues.
Any other comments, trustees? Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to approve.
Addington, so moved.
Second. Nero. Motion's made second. Any additional comments? If not, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
If you can beat the weather, go for it.
Thank you.
New business B, class 21 BYOB, bring your own booze, liquor creation. Board to consider an ordinance amending chapter 10 alcohol beverages, bring your own alcohol beverage. Retail, Article 2 retail license of the Village Code of Ordinances to allow the creation of a class 21 BYOB liquor license. Deputy Liquor Commissioner Jim Gunther is here to represent that. Manager Searle, would you like to read the background?
Sure. The owners of the Humidor cigar shop have requested this particular license be created for their business. We do not currently have a class that accommodates the type of business that they have right now. I can tell you from my own personal involvement with the Deputy Liquor Commissioner, this issue goes back a ways. It was difficult to find comparable communities that have licenses like this, and we did look at at least one other community. And I don't know if the Deputy Liquor Commissioner has come across any others since then, but that is what the request is. It would be to issue, create a license and then category, and then be able to issue a liquor license to a cigar shop. And the one that we compared to is, or that we looked at was in countryside, I believe.
Correct. So just to lay out the basic framework of what the ordinance kind of captures, we're talking about a bring-your-own-bottle liquor classification for the consumption of alcohol on the premises for a public accommodation that is tied to tobacco products. Furthermore, the structure must be freestanding and not connected to any other business, a minimum of 3,000 square feet, and the business must offer, for rent or for sale, secured storage lockers for members of the business. Past that, I think it's a good thing to look at how this proposal compares to our current BYOB, because we do have a class 16, which is currently on the books, and it is, but there are differences, and I think it would be good to go through those. So, a class 16 currently allows for the consumption of wine on the premises. A class 21, which is what's proposed, will, is proposed for all liquor, so beer, wine, and hard alcohol. This class 16 has a time period between 5 and 10, because that, the idea behind that is that it's consumption of wine during the course of a meal. There's no stipulation to the, there's a stipulation to the 21 as being the consumption of tobacco products. But the hours are different. So we're, class 16 is 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM. The class 21 would be 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM, which is the right, the store hours of the Humidor. The class 16 requires another Westmont liquor license, that of a restaurant, to be a class 1, 2, 3, 4, 7, or 8. So you can't have a class 16 without one of those other licenses. The class 21 is a standalone BYOB license for purposes of the proposal. After that, everything is very similar as far as the conditions for how the license is utilized. So it's still, it's still contained to one bottle per patron with, in conjunction with the purchase, purchasing and consumption of tobacco products. Anybody that performs a corkage duty from the business will have to be Basset certified. Any unused alcohol that's not consumed on the premises can either be stored in the storage containers, storage lockers, or can be sealed, similar to the current BYOB license for the, for the class 16. They still have to have a certificate of insurance and hold the village harmless. As Manager Searle said, we did compare this to countryside, which has a business. Our ordinance is crafted very similarly to countryside. In my discussions with police officers from countryside, they have no issues with their business as a comparable. Manager and I did an onsite inspection, unannounced. They were very friendly, walked us through the business. The lady that we talked to was excellent, took us from top to bottom and explained how their business operated. The manager and I also did a site inspection of the Humidor at the time, and kind of did a comparison, and very comparable in nature. So, I do have Tammy from the Humidor here tonight, many of you recognize, and she can answer questions or, she'll first explain how this license is going to affect their business, and answer any questions you may have.
Hello, thank you for your time. We have been looking at this for quite some time. Our biggest competitors are the countryside store, which is who this comparison is to. I can pack our music.
That was them.
So, they are very comparable, size-wise, to our facility also. And with their BYOB licensing, we have lost customer after customer because of that. You know, we are here in Westmont, and we love the business here, and we feel like we're an asset, that we do bring in a lot of people. Most of our clientele, probably over 90 percent, come from the surrounding communities, and they often pass the countryside store to get to us. And we're very thankful that they do come to us, but it is a huge competition with and their BYOB licensing and the ability that they have with that. And so we were just looking for the village, just for something comparable, just so that we can maintain. You know, it's been tough economically for everybody. We just got hit with a higher tobacco license. This last year, we went from 18 percent to 36 percent tobacco license tax on our cigars, which has always hurts us on top of having this kind of hindrance. Does anybody have any questions for us?
I think Manager Searle had a comment.
I just want to make one other comment for the public information. When the board first created the BYOB, they were very conservative and concerned about the classification, and it is periodically reviewed, it's annually reviewed. I would assume that this would become part of that, and I just wanted to let you know that that review is actually coming up at the beginning of this next calendar year.
And I do, the whole reason this has been even gone this far is because I relied on the Jim and the police department, and what their research said that as far as they're concerned, there's no, there wouldn't be any issues as far as enforcement, and they're very comfortable with creating of this license. So, just to- Put on, anybody from the public? Anybody, you come to the, you come to the podium and state your name, and-
John Kirish, 508 Blackhawk. I didn't come here tonight to, I'm right down the street from them. So just hearing that they're going to possibly have alcohol. Just, I guess for a point of clarification, is it 21 years old to get into your business? Or a tobacco's 18. How do you monitor an 18-year-old coming in? He could buy cigarettes and tobacco, but drinking, how does that work?
Yeah, either you or Jim.
Just like anything else, we card. I mean, we card for 18-year, I mean, anybody that comes in the door, we don't want to lose our tobacco license. We wouldn't, if we lost our tobacco license, this is our livelihood. You know, my kids will not be going to college. So, it's very, very important for us. But, so in that same regard, it's just like at a restaurant, you have a 21-year-old sitting with an 18-year-old, you card, and you know, you're responsible that that 18-year-old is not drinking, that 21-year-old is drinking. We would be under the same guidelines, and we'd also all be certified, you know, those who are doing it. And also, the alcohol would be kept in our control. We would pour it then with that, so the alcohol's not open, being left at the table with them.
Okay.
So that we wouldn't have any of that, you know. And we don't want any of the issues, and on top of that, we don't really sell cigarettes either. We're strictly cigars and pipes. Because of that, that really limits, I mean, a lot of 18-year-olds can't afford our products, I mean, or they don't want to spend, you know, they'd rather, you know, buy a pack of cigarettes versus cigars, and we don't offer that. Our clientele base is really average age, is probably in their mid-40s.
Thanks. Anything else, John?
No, I just-
Okay.
If it goes policing.
Oh, I think that's the whole, trustees.
I have a comment. I just, first of all, I want to say thank you to Humidor, because I know you're very, very active in our chamber and extremely generous when people are knocking on your door, asking for something for a raffle. Just to give them a plug, just tonight alone, they gave a really generous gift for a raffle for our high school volleyball team. Really, really very generous. So we're so happy to have you in Westmont. But I do have a question for the Deputy Liquor Commissioner/Deputy Chief. I know with, for example, Bakersfield has BYOB for wine.
Correct.
I know that if I go in there, not that this would ever happen, but if I went in there and I didn't finish my bottle of wine and I had half left, I know they can seal it. It'll never happen. I can seal it.
No.
I can seal it up appropriately. And then what if I want to go down the street now to the Humidor? Can they accept an open bottle of liquor, wine, or whatever? Because I'm a little uncomfortable with that.
I would think that technically, if it's, if you go to the Bakersfield and they seal it, it's sealed for purposes of being able to transport it in your vehicle. So to me, that would be a sealed bottle, whether it was uncorked or not.
So they would be able to open it?
I would not see why it would be prohibited. I mean, if you wanted to finish the other half of the wine-
Okay.
Then I wouldn't see a problem with that.
Okay. So the same would be true of a bottle of vodka or a bottle of shaves?
Well, you can't drink a bottle of vodka at the Bakersfield.
No, but I mean, from your home, for example.
Sure.
You couldn't bring something from your home? That's half-opened or bin-opened.
I don't think there's anything that would prohibit that. I don't think it has to be with the seal intact to get it there.
Okay. More point of curiosity.
But again, putting a open sealed, open bottle of vodka in your car, if it's not in your trunk, it's illegal transportation of alcohol.
Well, but I mean, it could be in the trunk. I mean-
Well, if it's in the trunk, that's fine, because you're just not subject to the person.
And then they could walk into Humidor and-
I don't think there's anything prohibiting that.
Okay. I was just curious. And they're going to be Basset-trained, correct?
Correct, yep. By ordinance.
Wonderful. I'm curious as to who's serving the liquor. You guys are serving, so it's like I bring my bottle of wine, but you pour it and you serve it, and if he's having a vodka gimlet, you make it for him.
Wouldn't happen.
And on that, no, we don't, I mean, districts aren't, we're not a bartenders or anything, but we would be certified, and from our understanding with that certification, you know, we are, you know, certified due to pouring. Also, we want to do that to control it, so that we do know, you know, the amount. And again, in comparison to our, in comparison to our competitors in countryside, really it is just a compliment to the cigars, is really kind of what, you know, it adds to it, you know.
So they may bring some cognac.
We don't want, yeah, and we're not, you know, looking to, you know, I mean, we don't want anybody that's intoxicated in our facilities. It's not the, if, you know, we encourage everybody to come and see our facility. I mean, it's just not what we're about. You know, we want a higher end, you know, we're looking just to make sure that we can continue to draw the higher-end clientele in, you know, to our facilities and stuff. So if they're intoxicated, that only looks down on us and our business, and I mean, we're a family business, you know, our kids come in and visit and stuff, so, you know, we just want to maintain that level of, you know, business.
And if I understand right, it's like you walk into like a public area, and that's where you'll do carding, and then they go into the lounge area.
Alcohol won't be in the retail section.
So, for someone under age 21 to get from the retail section to the lounge area is pretty much impossible.
Yeah, it's actually, we have closed door, we have doors that are, can be closed off from our retail section into our lounges. And then even at that, our third lounge, our Davidoff Lounge, is a members-only lounge. So, you know, we have membership to that lounge, as well as we already have members' lockers, you know, which is part of, you know, the BYOB licensing part of that. We already have those established.
Do you serve any food, or will you have any food or anything? Snacks?
No, I have lots of lunch in the refrigerator, but, you know, a lot of the guys actually do bring in. I mean, to that, you know, Chipotle probably gets a lot of business from us.
So they'll come in.
A lot of the guys are picking that up, pizza deliveries are kind of, you know, I mean, they're just, you know, snacking or munching if they're hanging out. But again, that's not really what we're about. We're really just about, a lot of guys are, you know, doing business, bringing clients, having a cigar, relaxing, you know. My, I'm from Burbane, my brother couldn't believe, you know, our business, and he came up, he's like, "This is like a Starbucks for cigar smokers." So, that's kind of the feel for it, you know. It's just a place really to get away and relax a little bit.
Watch the Hawks and...
Watch the Hawks win.
Yeah.
Any other?
I think that's all I have.
Trustee Eddington.
Yeah, that, just, this is more clarification than anything, and I think you've kind of answered it, Jim, is if I went there, and it doesn't matter whether it's a bottle of wine or a bottle of scotch, when I leave, then apparently they have lockers if I want to leave it there.
They have, they have lockers available for rent?
For rent, yeah.
Right, so if you're a frequent customer, they can rent?
Well, if I'm a normal customer, I can just leave my alcohol right there, and it's there the next time I come.
Correct.
But if I want to take it home, will they have the same training as far as sealing these containers?
Yes, they will have, they will be obligated by ordinance to seal the container, to seal the bottles, just as the Class 16, it's the same, same exact language in both.
And again, they have to, I as a consumer have to follow the same rules, that still should be in my trunk.
Correct, the safest place is your trunk, sure.
Trustee Barker.
I would say, you know, there's probably so much risk and so many regulations that govern this thing, and I trust our Police Department to do the job on the outside, so I'm not worried about the abuse and that particular issue. And I think it would, you know, be good for your business.
Sure, and we talked in the hallway, they would be now in the rotation of what we consider a bar check, so we would send officers in, just like we would send in any other, any other bar in town, carding people, they're comfortable with that, you know, having a uniform presence in there from time to time is not a problem. So, that's probably the 90% of how we would enforce the ordinance on the books.
And it's just one of this classification, so if another one would come to us, we, you know, we can look at it case by case.
Sure.
And now, we want to grant another license of this type.
Sure, and the language draft is...
In a hair salon, I mean, any number of businesses could ask for something like this.
Well, it would have to be a tobacco-related business.
Okay, perfect.
It couldn't be a closed door.
Okay.
And a standalone building with so many as 1,000 square feet.
Works.
And I think, trustee Barry.
I have a couple of questions in regard to the, I said with the Class 16, that those particular businesses have a license established already.
Correct.
So, fee-wise, are we going to elevate this BYOB to compensate those people that have paid for those liquor licenses, to keep everything on a level playing field, or had you, had we thought about the fees involved with this?
We have. The Class 16 is $300 initial and annual. The Class 21 proposed is $1,000 initial and annual fee. So, because you need another license, so basically, if you have a Class 16, you have another license, so you're basically paying for two. So, it's $300 on top of whatever Class 1, 2, 3, 4, 7, and 8. So, to, because this is a standalone license, because the 21 doesn't require one of the other licenses, we raised the fee on that. And I believe our fee is $200 less than Countryside's? I want to see, I think they're $1,200, but it's in the ballpark.
And you may have answered this, I may have just not heard. So, will, again, if I was to bring a bottle in there, will you guys provide the mixers, or how is that going to work? People bring their own glasses and the mixer, or?
Okay, and all honesty, we're not mixing, I mean, I'm not, I don't, we don't even want to get into that, like, no umbrellas, like, you know, this is really just like, you know, the guys that are coming in, it's just a little bit to go, it complements, you know, the cigar.
So, you're not charging a glass fee, a pour fee, anything like that?
There'll be a corkage fee, and that's it, but there won't, I mean, we're, literally, we're not, I mean, we'll have, I don't even want to do a lot of dishes. I mean, we're just keeping it really bare bones minimum. You know, again, it's really a big competitive issue, you know, with the surrounding Countryside being almost identical to our facility and stuff. So, and that's really how they have it also, you know.
And then to the corking fee, is there, is there a tax on that then? Is, how does that work, Jim? Is that taxed, or is that...
That is not my area of expertise. I'm not too sure how that is taxed.
The attorney, do you have any comment on that?
I'm pretty sure there's no tax on that service.
It's a service.
It's a tip, though. I'm sorry.
And then to that, then, does that open up in the future then, would the Humidor then be allowed to have gaming because they carry a liquor license?
Funny you should ask. The Chief Mulher and I have been researching that since the beginning of the meeting. It is our layman interpretation that they will not qualify for a gaming license because the license will not be issued by the Illinois Liquor Control Commission, it will be issued by Villager Westmont. And the law is specific for the gaming, on the gaming side, to that. So, they will, I don't think they qualify, but we will call their attorney to be 100% sure. Chief?
Yeah, looking at the video gaming restrictions, precondition for a licensed location, all cases and application for a licensed location to operate a video gaming terminal, each licensed establishment, which this would be. Licensed to turn or establish, or veterans establish shall possess a valid liquor license issued by the Illinois Liquor Control Commission, in effect at the time of their application and at all times thereafter. And in looking at the Illinois Liquor Control Commission, by the regulations, they do not have a state liquor license for BYOB.
But could they not get one? Or the state doesn't provide for one?
Correct.
Okay, I see.
Well, it's our interpretation, and we will confirm this tomorrow, but this is our interpretation right now, that we don't think they would be eligible. That's our, based on...
Yeah, I think John, Shaken said yes.
Okay, I know that was a concern of mine, I wondered about that.
Trustee Scott. Oh, I'm sorry, here, you're still in the row, go ahead.
I was just getting started, wait a second. Secondly, I do have, as the resident had concern, I do have concern that the age limit is 18 with allowing 21-year-olds to bring in liquor and having an 18-year-old as an age limit to get in there. I do have concerns with that. And I don't know if that's a possibility of making it over 21, or where that lies, but again, as we had a resident, and I do have concerns with that.
Wouldn't that be the same thing, though? It's just a normal restaurant, someone letting in an 18-year-old?
It's actually, it's actually more restrictive, because the ordinance requires a designated, either roped-off or segregated area where the consumption of alcohol is going to take place. And although it doesn't say so, I think you can restrict that to only persons of 21-years or older into that designated lounge area. So, if someone 18 can come in and buy the retail, and I guess that's a question for all of you.
So, if three, if there's three guys that are 21 and one guy is 19, those three can sit there and have a bottle, and then should, that 19-year-old could sit in there with them? Or couldn't?
Well, I think that's something we need to talk about, because that's a concern that I shared as well, and I think you can eliminate that concern by saying, no one is admitted back to the, what we'll call lounge area, where consumption of alcohol is allowed unless they're 21-years or older. So...
That goes back, I think, to Steve's question. If I take my granddaughters, who are eight and four, into Bakersfield, and I order a drink, I'm not going to let them drink it, but I'm still going to sit at the same table with them with my drink.
Is...
I think we're, I think we're, we're overthinking this just a bit.
But I think what might be a little bit different in that scenario, in the lounge area, is there always a member of your staff in the, there's always a member of your staff present?
Not always a member, but my husband probably currently has our store up on his cameras. I mean, our cameras are on our phones, watching our store all the time. So, I mean, we have, as we say, eyes in the sky all the time, and we do have, you know, video monitoring in our stores. From our front screen, our register, we have images of the whole lounge, every lounge, so that we can, you know, visually see everything, you know, just to keep everything. And we also have, I mean, ashtrays always have to be, and we have, you know, our employees are always...
Our staff's going in and out, cleaning up.
Yes, constantly, because we already offer free water and pop. So, you know, we're constantly picking up water bottles, pop, giving pop or water, you know, making sure everybody's comfortable. You know, I mean, it is social, our employees will come in and talk, make sure everybody's doing okay, ask if they want another cigar. So, yeah, and again, I mean, I completely understand the question. You know, we, the amount of under, you know, I mean, 18, 19, 20-year-olds that come into our facility is, I don't know percentage, to be honest with you, but I mean, I would say like, under 5%, if not 1%. I mean, it's just really a small amount, and usually those kids that come in, it's their 18th birthday, they come in, they're going out with their friends. They don't, they don't, they don't feel comfortable in our facility, as well as we don't really like them to be comfortable in our facility. We don't cater to them, we're catering towards a more mature crowd.
Trustee Scott?
And I was just going to chime in, and that isn't their, their customer base.
Yeah. If you're going to do it for them, then you got to do it for whoever else decides
to wants it, and that's going to affect somebody's business, restaurant-wise. I just want to give kudos and thank the mayor on this, because this is a new way of thinking in a progressive way, and it makes our community more viable and more competitive with our surrounding neighbors. So, thank you, sir, for thinking about this.
Jim did all the works. Any other, John, you have anything to add?
Just a few. As trustee said, I could point it out, this ordinance right now creates one available license, and the applicant, if it's Humidor, would have to come in and go through the application process, and then the mayor would have the ability to issue a license if, and impose any reasonable special conditions on that license that he feels are reasonable. If another applicant comes in, it's going to come before this board, one, to make a license available for them, and then if the mayor has any special concerns, or if the trustees voice those to the mayor as liquor commissioner, he can impose any special restrictions, such as, "I want to make sure your designated area is designated in this manner, where only people 21 can get in," or whatever concerns he may have. The, the language right now in the draft ordinance talks about that the licensee may provide glassware and ice to patrons and may uncork or open the alcohol poured and control its consumption. Should we say "shall"? Because don't, don't you want the employees of the establishment, being the sole ones, to be pouring it or opening a bottle of beer, so that they know how much consumption is going on, as opposed to allowing someone to bring in, let's say, a 12-pack and just open it by themselves and not knowing how much they're drinking?
Yeah, and that was kind of where I was going with the question about, you know, will they be actually serving it at the table? Because there's a big difference in a bottle of wine with maybe five glasses or however many, or a fifth of vodka with many, many drinks in it. And, you know...
That's my concern, is how do they regulate if there's a fifth of...
The over-serving, I guess.
Yeah, the over-serving.
Sure.
Is that through the Basset?
In the research for, for other municipalities with BYO licenses, there is definitely one or the other position on that issue. Either they take the position that it's, that the establishment is completely hands-off with the BYOB, or completely hands-on. So, I think it's at the comfort level of the board to determine what they feel is best for the community. So, if they want, if they want to demand that it's a hands-on thing with the, with the bottles, then I'm perfectly fine with that. But there was a very distinct separation between those two things, either hands-on or hands-off, so...
The problem with the hands-off is no one's Basset-certified. You know, if I'm pouring for myself, I'm not trained in over-serving or looking at the indications to see if somebody's over-served. And again, you know, if you're Basset-certified, you know those signs and symptoms, if this guy's staggering, he can't have anymore. Well, how do, how are we going to regulate that if somebody's just sitting in there and they're over-serving themselves?
Well, I would advocate for a hands-on approach. I like the, not taking that wiggle room out and saying that they control the liquor when it comes in.
So, does that bring us back into providing the glass, providing the mixer, and then taxing it at that point?
Well, they don't have to provide the mixer, someone can come in with their own mixer, but they would have to, if you direct, they would have to actually do the pouring of each glass.
Which is what your intent was anyhow, right?
Yeah, that we would be pouring the alcohol.
So, we should just include that.
Exclusively, you guys are going to pour the liquor?
If that's what the, I mean, we're, you know, if that's what the village is comfortable with, we have no problem with that.
I mean, I can't imagine that they would ever risk anything going wrong. I mean, it's their livelihood, it's their...
This is our number-one store.
Yeah, so I'm very comfortable that, you know, you're going to be Basset-trained, you've got staff going in and out of that lounge, people are going to kind of be watching. You know, the responsibility is all on you. We, you know, the mayor can pull the plug at any time if there's a violation or if there's a problem. So, I can't imagine that you would even begin to risk that...
Yeah, because again, that would risk our tobacco licenses.
But that's the same with any restaurant or bar. You could say that with any restaurant or bar where the accidents happen. I mean, that, what, Bakersfield doesn't want to risk it either, but it can happen.
No, but if they're pouring their own, what ensues is the guy who's been pouring them, because they're very busy that night, pours too much. What do they do then to be responsible is, "Give me your keys, you're not leaving." At what point there, they found out and it's too late. And that's a possibility, if somebody's sitting there watching a game and they got a lot of people in there.
Had a bad day at work.
Whatever. You know, and at that point, I like the fact that they'd have to be pouring, because they're going to have to be watching what's going on.
So, then you as a business, then you would be required to have dram shop then at that point, once you're serving?
No, because they're not selling alcohol. They'd have to have commercial liability insurance, but they, they have to check with their own attorney on that. But it's my opinion that because they're not selling it, I don't even know if they can get dram shop coverage for allowing someone else to bring in their own alcohol and consume it. If it's available, fine, they might want to get protected, otherwise they'd have to just have general liability.
You know how Countryside handles that?
I was just going to ask that question.
Hey, usually, there's a host liquor insurance policy that it can get, being the host of it.
Right, the proposed ordinance has a certificate of insurance reflecting general liability purposes, naming the Village of Westmont as an additional insured, and a whole harmless for the village. So, I thought that that was the same as what the other liquor license classifications has, because I thought that was a carbon copy language from the Class 16 to this one, but...
Well, it may be for Class 16, again, because they're not, they're not selling it. If you're selling it, you have dram shop insurance.
So, then, John, if, when this ordinance would be approved, then a business similar to them, the hookah shop, something like that, could come and request the same license, correct?
Well, they couldn't, because they're not a standalone facility. They're attached to a strip center.
Because they're in a strip mall.
They're grandfathered in under the exception to the Smoke Free Illinois Act that allows for smoking on the premises, which the state law says you have to be a standalone facility. And I think they're grandfathered in, which is why they're allowed to have it, but yet they couldn't qualify for this license. Another comment, hours of operation, right now, it reads generically that they can allow for BYOB during their normal business hours. Do we want to restrict that to the actual hours of Humidor, which are, is 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM? Because this isn't, my concern is, if you allow this for another operation down the road, they might want to be open from 6:00 AM to 1:00 AM. And maybe that's a longer period, where you'd rather not have someone drinking in an establishment starting at 6:00 AM.
Hours of operation.
Yeah.
I think that makes sense, and if they're having a special event or something where they might end up being open until midnight, then they ask for a special whatever.
Hawks are playing at 10 o'clock, I don't know what's going on.
Yeah, no, whatever.
You can get a special...
Yeah. You've had that request?
Yeah, for West Coast Hawks games during the playoff run. And then my last comment is, I didn't draft this originally, so I'm sorry I'm bringing this up now, but it says, "No more than one bottle of alcohol per patron shall be permitted to be uncorked." But then it says, when it says "one bottle of alcohol," it says wine, beer, or liquor.
Yeah.
So, I understand the wine, and I understand the liquor.
One bottle of beer.
But one bottle of beer seems too restrictive.
If it's a really big beer.
Yeah. So, I...
Sure. We, whatever, you know, I, I think that, I think a case of beer is too big. I would say a six-pack, or no more than, per, per patron.
But, but you know, there's still that, I don't know how you make it consistent, because, you know, I'll use the example again of a fifth of vodka compared to a bottle of wine. A fifth of vodka is going to serve a lot more people. So if I'm allowed to bring one, and Steve's allowed to bring one, and you can bring one, you better set up the radar car. No, just kidding.
You're still serving.
But you know what I'm saying? It's like...
And we're still certified, so we wouldn't have, by our certification, be allowed to serve that much, you know?
Right.
Right, so, because it's going to be, you're going to monitor it.
Yes.
Yeah, I was less concerned about the monitoring and, and the quantity, as much as it was too restrictive in saying one bottle of beer. And as long as you're allowing a bottle of wine or a bottle of booze, you might as well allow, you know, a six-pack per patron, or just not even specify. Just say a bottle of wine, a bottle of liquor, or beer.
Right.
Something along those lines.
That's fine.
All right, so I'll, I'll change that up.
Yeah, that makes better sense.
That's all I had.
See what happens when you create a new license, you gotta...
Gotta hash it out.
Any other?
We've done this before.
If not, then I would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance creating Class 21 BYOB liquor license.
Can I just ask one other thing real quick?
Well, can we make the motion, and I'll ask?
Oh, yeah.
So move, Scott.
Second, Nero.
Motion's been made and seconded. Onto question.
Is this something that we can review a year from now as we are the other one?
Yeah, I think Manager Searle mentioned that, and I made a note that I'm going to add that to the end of the ordinance, yeah.
Okay, I want to make sure we're going to do that.
So we will not review this in January, we'll review the other ones in the past.
I think we should review it in January and kind of get an update, how's it going? And then if everybody...
Remember, they still have to go through the license process and background, which typically is going to take 60 days plus, maybe.
We're already almost to January.
So we might as well do it in January '15.
Yeah, next.
And again, just to confirm, that there would be no State of Illinois liquor license, just the, just the local ordinance?
Correct.
Yes. Any other questions? Seeing a roll call, please.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Congratulations, we'll work on getting that class. And the only thing I left to say, Tammy, is I know that still, we've got some work to do with the fire department, so you need to sit down with them. We've got to finish off your life safety plan. I know Chief Weiss was, he left that comment to me, and I said, I know now we'll, we'll finish it off. So I know you had some complications, but we'll work on it. Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for being in Westmont, and for all of your generosity, and you're so active with everything. Great.
All right, thank, thank you. New Business C, Pompey Restaurant, Class 4 liquor license. Board to consider an ordinance increasing the number of available Class 4 liquor license to accommodate a liquor license request from Pompey Restaurant located at 200 West Ogden Avenue in Westmont. Manager Searle.
Pompey Restaurant has applied for a Class 4 liquor license as a new business. License allows for the sale of beer and wine only on the licensed premises. Owners Thomas and Jody Davino will oversee the day-to-day operations of the business. The restaurant is tentatively scheduled to open at the end of November 2013. It'll be open from 11:00 a.m. till 9:00 p.m., except for Fridays and Saturday nights, where it will be open to 10:00 p.m. And the petitioner...
Petitioner Searle, so is the Deputy Liquor Commissioner.
I think the, the foundation's pretty much been laid, so I'll turn it over to Tom to talk about Pompey on Ogden Avenue.
Hello, hello, Mayor, and trustees, and whoever's left, left of our fine audience.
Lost the Boy Scouts.
Lost the Boy Scouts.
Uh, yeah, you know, it's been our, and Pompey's been in our family since 1909. My great-grandfather started it then, and we're the fifth generation, and we're excited to be here. And, you know, it's a family business, pizza, pasta, soup, salad, sandwiches, and casual. And, you know, we're looking forward to providing fine food and fine service, and, and a great atmosphere for all of you folks, and we look forward to it. And basically, that's it. We're, you know, we, we're a Class 4 license for beer and wine, and, and that's it.
And when do you plan on opening?
Hopefully, the end of November, late November, hopefully, so, real soon.
I don't think I've ever had the pleasure eating there, but if everybody who's ranting and raving about it, I look forward to it.
Oh, yeah. You're, you're going to be hooked. If you want time in there, it's all over. You'll be a lifer. So we hope to be there for five generations.
One question, if I may, while you're talking about the history. I think I read in one of the, in one of the bios that this is the third restaurant?
Uh, well, it, it's a long story. When my father took it over, you know, we start, I opened up a, a, one in Lakeview by Wrigley Field, and, you know, we, we grew to eight restaurants. And my dad sold them about eight years ago and hung on to the original store. So the new owners kind of, basically, didn't turn out well, and it's been a disaster, and they closed them all down. So this is, Westmont's our, you know...
Was the one in Oak Brook Terrace one of those stores?
Yeah, yeah. We owned it initially, and then when my dad sold it, the new...
But you, you are, you were not the owners when they closed?
No, no. My dad sold that eight years ago, and, and when they took over, they cut everything, recipes, our family recipes, and service, and all the things that made Pompey successful, they kind of, you know, basically ran it down. And it, it's been a nightmare, but, you know, we, we put that behind us, and Westmont, we're excited about it. It's our, you know, we, we have the name back, and we're basically regrouping, and this is like our springboard store in Ogden, so.
Is anybody in the audience, any questions? Trustees?
Well, for the calzones at the original location.
And I know with Larry Forsberg, our Chamber Executive Director, I know we'll have a grand opening.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Ribbon cutting.
Yeah, hopefully, ribbon cutting, the whole deal.
We'll do the whole thing.
We're excited.
And, Manager Searle, did you have? Nothing, no one else, then I entertain a motion to, to approve increasing the, the number of Class 4 liquor licenses.
Motion to approve. Motion by Addington to approve.
Second, Nero. Motion made and seconded. Any additional questions? Bruce, did you have one?
I just wanted to say, we're glad you're here.
Well, thank you. We're glad to be here, thank you. And we're all, we're all excited.
And then just to, to clarify, I, I know your Oak Brook Terrace restaurant, you, you would go order, and then like you get your food at the tables, is that how you guys will be set up also?
Yeah, pretty much basically the, the same. I, I made a few changes with the, with the system, with, with the kitchen. We're going to try and give as much right to the counter, and, and the higher-end stuff, like appetizers and entrees and stuff that takes a little more time, we'll give you a number, and, and then you sit down, and we'll send that stuff to you. But a slice of pizza, if you're coming for a salad, I could basically give it to you right at the counter, you could pay, grab a pop and sit down, and it'll be, you know, fast and smooth.
Similar to like an Uncle Bob's type setup, is, is that similar to that?
Or, um, Bona Beat?
It's kind of a cross between, you know, like, yeah, Bona Portillo's and, and the patio kind of mix kind of thing. You know, a lot of stuff you can get right at the counter, and, and a lot of stuff we'll send to the table. But there's also the option for people who just want to just go to the register, order a salad, and have the salad sent to their table, we could do that, too. People who are in a hurry, they go right and they grab the salad and they sit down, so.
Well, great, wish you the best of luck.
Oh, thank you.
He's talking a lot with his hands. You've got a...
What, my hands? It's an Italian thing, you know?
Got to be good.
Usually I have pizza sauce on my shirt. You can't see it in the black.
Motion has been made and seconded, and I, we'll have a roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
And we look forward to attending your open house and grand opening.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, thank you, trustees, appreciate it.
Excited to get you.
New Business D, Timber Ridge Subdivision, Acceptance of Public Improvements. Board to consider an ordinance accepting the public improvements for Timber Ridge Subdivision at Timber Ridge Court in 59th Street. Manager Searle.
Dan Roberts has completed all the required public improvements and village punch list items pertaining to the 13-lot single-family development. Before final engineering approval can be given, the subdivision security instrument can, and the subdivision security instrument can be released. Village code requires village board acceptance of public improvements. All pertinent village divisions have signed off on this request at this point.
And we have, we have staff, Shannon, and if you'd like to comment?
Thank you, Mayor, pretty straightforward. Manager Searle summarized, it's just a routine matter that we would need to bring approval, staff approval of the subdivision improvements before you, so that the engineering can be signed off on. We actually happen to have the developer with us this evening, Dan Roberts, so if you had any questions for him. The subdivision was originated about 14 or 15 years ago, back in 1999, and everything in terms of the public improvements has, has been approved internally.
Any, this is kind of straightforward, any questions from anybody in the audience? None from trustees, then?
Ask his own question.
Entertain a...
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second, Seneca.
Motion made, seconded. Any additional questions? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I guess that follows up with E, Shannon Lake Subdivision, Acceptance of Public Improvements. Board to consider an ordinance accepting the public improvements for Shannon Lake Subdivision, 800 to 829 Shannon Lake Court. Manager Searle.
Well, Met Construction has completed all required public improvements, and like the last item, all village punch list items pertaining to the 16-lot, single-family development have also been completed. And like the last item, before final engineering approval can be given, and subdivision security can be released, code requires village board to accept the public improvements, and, once again, all village divisions, departments have signed off.
Similar to the last one, Shannon.
Yes, just about identical here with the exception that the developer's representative is not able to be with us this evening. But I must say, I like the name of the subdivision.
That's one way to get it.
And again, you're satisfied everything is done?
Correct, yes.
Any questions from anybody? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Barker.
Second, Nero.
Motion made and seconded. Seeing no additional questions, roll call, please.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
New Business F, Kurtz Ambulance Agreement Extension. Board to consider an ordinance approving the extension to the current term of the agreement to provide ambulance service between the Village of Westmont and Kurtz Paramedic Services Incorporated. Manager Searle.
Kurtz Paramedic Services requesting an extension to the current term of the agreement, an option of three additional annual renewals for an amount not to exceed 3% of the previous annual contract. There are details that were in the packet attached letter July 24th, 2013. We extend, we had a fairly extensive discussion about this item at the last Administration Finance Committee meeting. I know one of the questions, and we've been very, very happy with Kurtz, they've worked very hard with this, particularly in some of our challenging budget times, and we, they've been great partners and provided great service to our residents. But I know one of the concerns was about bidding out the contract. We're not required to do that. However, and I'll stand corrected if I'm wrong, but I believe it was kind of the consensus of the committee that we would bid out the next contract after this extension. And I wanted to bring that out for public information.
I, I think so, and I think Chief Weiss. I know we've listened, and I know the, the fire department staff is extremely pleased, and you've given us several comments and ideas about it, so the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, as you know, we've been partners with Kurtz now since 98. It's been a great partnership, a very open partnership, very good employer. We've got great employees that it's not been a, kind of like a turntable-type door system here. And we got some 10-year employees, you know, one that's 12 years, a couple of them are 12 years, which is unheard of in the contract business. We're very pleased with the, you know, the quality of medics that we have and that we get from Kurtz. The communications is very open, they're involved in our community, and they're very open with us. One of the changes to this three-year extension is, in the past, was not to exceed a 4% increase, and they changed that to 3%. And over the last five to six years, as we noted in the Finance Committee meeting, that they've cut their contracts in excess of a $400,000 savings to the village. So, you know, we feel that it's appropriate to ask for that extension.
And they've been very supportive of our community events, they've been out providing paramedic service for our Fourth of July and the taste.
Thank you.
At their cost, so I think they've been very community-minded. Anybody in the audience have a question? Reporter can't ask questions. No, trustees? Anybody?
I think that we've got probably the best company we could, but in the fairness of transparency, I'm not opposed to doing it for next year, and I think it's going to just show what kind of a deal we're getting.
Yeah.
I think that's important for the public to, to understand it, where they may be sitting there going, well, every time it's the same people, well, you do it out for bid, and you'll see why.
Well, the contract actually would be extended for three years.
Three years?
It would be 2016.
Okay.
So that's what they're, they're asking for. So in 2016, we still want to go out to bid at that time. And Tom Bannon, who is the president or the owner of Kurtz, also stated that if, at any time, if we have any type of issue, we can break this contract, we do not have to stay in it. So that was one of the options, too. But I don't foresee that happening, since we've had them since 1998, and we never have had an issue. We have longevity. And the issue with it is, is that if we do go out to bid, and, you know, hopefully we keep them, but if we do get somebody else, we won't have that longevity anymore.
And I think...
And they have been good. I, I would venture a guess that a large portion of this community, they don't even realize that, that those people don't work for us. They think they are Westmont fire personnel, which they are through a contractor, but they really have, you know, a great commitment to this town.
And the majority of them actually do, are part-timers. So they work their full-time at Kurtz, and then they do come back, and they are part-time for us. I think there might be two members that are not at this point in time.
Wow, that's good.
Out of 12.
And again, I think you pointed out in our committee meeting that there's a lot more to the type of service they provide than the bottom line. And I think because of your, your department making those recommendations to us and walking us through it, I think that's why we got the three-year extension here. But I do have to agree with Trustee Scott, at some point, you just want to owe it to the public, at least just to see what competitive price is. Again, as long as everything's equal, and right now I think we're totally in favor of extending this, so. But I need a motion to do that.
I'd make the motion to approve the three-year extension.
Second by Barry.
All right, motion been made and seconded. Any additional comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Thanks, thank you. All right, under Agenda Item 10, miscellaneous, are there any other items? Trustee Barry, you rose, you raised your hand first.
Yes, I just, I have, I was hoping for an update from either Public Works Director May or Village Manager Searle on the life safety issue at the crosswalk of Cass and Quincy, that is not working, and now that it's dark in the mornings and night, it's kind of created a dangerous situation. I know it was due to be repaired with the railroad crossing, and then we found some snafus. Is there an update on that currently?
Yes, the, you just introduced it correctly, we were intending to replace the physical light pucks, that we would call them, that are mounted to the surface of the pavement, and it turns out that the complications with the crossing are more extensive than that, which would require pavement repairs before anything like that could be considered as well. Met with the mayor and the manager earlier this week, and at the Public Works Committee meeting, I'll give you a bigger update as far as the cost, both the replacement costs and the annual experience we've had with them as far as, you know, maintenance costs. But certainly liking your comments about wanting to continue to bring attention to the pedestrian activity in that crosswalk, and we are currently looking at a, like a, more of a strobe-type feedback light that are mounted to the pedestrian crosswalk signs themselves to get the same effect, but without doing it in pavement, we'll be doing it on the posts. And we're still shopping that right now, and that's something that can be added quickly, it's not subject to weather, and then we can, one, evaluate how that works compared to the old system, and then compare the options later.
And then at that point, we would look to go to the north crossing also? Are we going to try to tie those two in together?
The north crossing would be done as its own project, so when we're ready to do infrastructure improvements in North Cass, that has gone out to bid a couple times by itself and was extremely expensive because of the size of the project and the uniqueness of it. So if we can tie it into a bigger project when we're ready to do something on North Cass, all the way down there, it'd be a great time to do that, and we'll know what we want to do there based on what we find out on Quincy.
Like a water main type of situation?
On one side, yes. And again, just to comment, I had the opportunity to meet with staff on that, and I handed out around just an example of it, and I think cost-wise, you're looking at something that every year is an ongoing maintenance headache, and in our climate, everybody's gone away from the little pucks in the road, and I think we were talking about a total cost of probably what our purchase order is now to implement a new system, and you're not going to have that annual cost, so I think we're looking at a substantial savings over a three- or four-year period.
Crazy.
Am I stating that right there, Steve? Yeah. So, and this could be something that could be put in relatively quick.
We want to find somebody that's using it so we can go look at it and make sure that's what we want, so we're shopping it at the moment.
Great, thank you, Steve.
Any other miscellaneous?
Trustee Barker needs a new chair over here.
We're going to talk about that right after the meeting.
We're going to be doing budget here.
We can find a room for that.
What we'll find is that Bruce is going to get here early next time, and that chair is going to be somewhere else. Who's going to get it? It's not Westmont first, it's Bruce first.
That's right.
A tall attorney over. Attorney. Any other items? Seeing none, we don't need an executive session tonight, so that I'd entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moves, Seneca.
Second, Nero. Motion's made and seconded to adjourn the meeting. Roll call, please.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Add.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.